We don't want to run into that band concert that starts in just a little, few minutes more than an hour. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is just a presentation. There won't be any discussion or any questions. We'll have the presentation. It's being broadcast on the public access and it'll be recorded, so I believe that people who want to watch it later will have that opportunity. The report itself will be on the district's website.
Right now.
It's already on the website?
It's on the website right now, right?
Okay. No? It'll be tomorrow morning. So the whole report will be on the website. And subsequently, we'll schedule opportunities for public discussion and meetings on what to do with the report. But tonight is just a presentation. So the committee to get this report done was chaired by Mr. Colleagues. So would you like to introduce our consultants?
Sir, the gentleman standing is Mr. Joe Townsley. He was the lead on this study. And sitting next to him is Mr. Doug Rogers from Krec. This is their show. Everyone is seeing us for the first time, so tell us what you've got.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? I have...
Pull the microphone a little closer so that the folks who are home can hear you. That's going to have to drag the box.
Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you. Is that going to work now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's a pleasure to be back. We, I understand, have one hour, and we're going to make every effort and some will keep us on track. Quick background is that my background is I've been in public education well over 50 years, and I've done these kind of projects for other school districts around the state, including closing schools. And as a superintendent, I've also closed schools, redistricted. I understand the sensitivity of the issue when we talk about potentially moving young people out of buildings to other places, potentially closing a local school. It's a major issue for every community. And we're going to make every effort tonight to show you what we have in terms of the direction that you gave us. And by the way, I'm going, I've done this other places, and you had a much better start, quite frankly, because rather than saying, "Go out and do a study and see how many schools will take our kids," and give us all the indications of how many programs and services we'll take, you started with three options for us. And then the report that you have tonight, which we're going to cover, is essence going to go from really, which is now called Option Three, which was students will attend host magnet schools. And as you'll see, Option Two and Three, also One and Two, are the ones that obviously impact on this building. My partner here, Doug Rogers, talk a little bit about yourself and your experience.
Good evening. My name is Doug Rogers. I'm with Krec. I'm a senior project manager with the construction division. My focus has been on construction management and owner's project management. I assisted Joe with gathering data, putting the information together, working with the architect, and taking the information on renovate as new, demo the building, as well as helping to consolidate the information that Joe put together. So glad to be here.
The architect, who will have been here this evening, has had a death in his family and was not able to attend. But obviously, you've had conversations with him in the past, because Bob's did a lot of work here. One more comment. Capital Region Education Council is where this gentleman works. I'm an independent consultant. I do not work for the Capital Region Education Council. If you're not familiar with it, it's in Hartford, Connecticut, has over 2,000 employees. It in essence is one of the largest research and 18 magnet schools are now being developed out of there. So when we wanted data, we had access to sources of research that you wouldn't have elsewhere. Okay. If you look at your report, we're going to start right in, I believe it's page two. Is that correct?
Page three.
Page three. Page three provides really the background of information in terms of what was the charge and the charge was clear to, number one, not in particular order, but to look at the option of the students in this high school attending other high schools under a host high school plan. And that translates into contacting superintendents and boards of education to determine whether, in fact, they would receive students and, in fact, what would be their tuition costs. And I'll talk about that in more detail. So if you look at that first part, we have made every effort to address the issues in this feasibility study that will give you the answers to those questions and will give you, hopefully, a path towards the future as you think about what was occurring here in your community. If we move down to the statement of problem, you'll see the note, "Across the nation right now, this is being addressed because there are fewer students in more schools, and they are all examining options to reduce costs and/or not lose their autonomy." And as you'll see later, I think, in this state, there'll be opportunities for additional funds coming back to schools if they do enter into some type of regional collaboration with each other. That's going to be a major emphasis for all communities. The statement of the problem is pretty clear. If you move from that piece right there in terms of the options and you move, I believe it is page 18 of your document?
No, we moved straight to page four, go over to Option Three.
I'm sorry. We did it. We moved it. Page four. There we go. Page four. Option Three. Option Three, we placed at the first part of this because it's what drives Option Two and One. Option Three is, can we outsource students to other schools? And here's how the process worked. I met with the subcommittee. I indicated that, having done this in the past. Tell me what direction you have, which was, please find out for us what school districts and driving districts would take students. And so that started in January. We identified at that meeting 12 school districts that were within 20 miles of your community. Then the process starts. I talked to every superintendent more than once in the call, asked the questions that you see right here. What is your interest in taking students? From Wyndham. We're talking about the 2018-19 school year. You can't do it in the next budget year, so obviously, that was a year out. If you are taking students now, what is your current tuition cost? Would you share with me how you set your tuition now and in the future? If they had an interest in it, and I'll show you a form here in just a moment, and how they responded. What other questions might you have? And quite frankly, I found the superintendents very receptive to discussing taking more students. No one said, "No, we won't do it." I think one said, "We just can't take any students." What drives part of that discussion today's world is there are open seats in a number of those schools, and in our own community, they're saying, "Why don't we have tuition-paying students coming in?" And I can name five districts that take all the students from another town, yet the tuition cost offsets the cost in their own community. So that's going to continue over the next few years. So I think you'll see more receptivity for those school district saying, "Yes, we want to take students." They have to go back to their own board of education. And what happened in February, in March, is not necessarily what's going to happen when I talk to them again in the spring. So then in April, I start the whole process all over again. And a couple of school districts have said they'll take 200, and then say, "We're going to do 100." Some said, "You know, I've talked a little with my board, but because we don't know what kind of money is coming back to us in our own community, we can't make a decision at this point." So it changed somewhat, but not a great deal, and I'll go over that with you in just a moment. In fact, we could do that right now, given the sensitivity of time. I believe it's page 17. Is that correct?
Which one are you looking at?
I'm going to go to the responses from the superintendents.
That would be nine.
Nine. Thank goodness you're here. Go to page nine. You'll see a response sheet. And what I've done with that is to indicate to you, for example, Namo School, all of these are within 20 miles. By the way, if you take this to the next step, it's not the 20 miles, it's the amount of time it would take to get to those communities if, in fact, you were to move into a more in-depth study. So you can be 13 miles away, and it takes longer to get there than it does 18 miles if you know where you go. So if you look at that, you've got Beacon Academy says, "Look, we just cannot make a commitment at this time." Period. Bolton, very interested, and it may take 50 students. And on the right side, you see their tuition rate is $11,000. Now, I'll add something that's not here. If you do go another step, tuition rate can be negotiable. And that's something that would go into your eventual review of how much the cost for the program might be. And then you've got Coventry, very interested. Take 100 students. You can see their tuition rate at...
That can't be right.
That can't be right.
$1,400 for Coventry?
Yes.
We want to send them off.
How do they have a $1,400 per student tuition rate?
I'm sorry. Question one?
I'm sorry. It says $1,400.
It must mean 14,000.
14,000.
Yeah, it's 14,000. It's a bargain.
Yeah, that's what it said. Let's go.
We will help them build a new school at that point.
Okay. This meeting's over, and...
So that's 14,000.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yale Smith, 100 students, 12,000. Lyman Memorial. Do you want to review these verbally for everybody? Okay. You can see it. Manchester, no response. Deutsche Academy, interesting enough, has a range of tuitions because they charge based upon certain programs that students might be in. And you can see their range runs from 12,000 to 1,800.
1,800 or 18,000?
18,000. I'm wrong. Yep. Plainfield, no commitment this time. Ham, cannot make a decision at this time. Stratford, same thing. So what you have, just to get right down to the gut of this thing, we, I was asking them, can you take 595 students?
17?
And nobody can take 595 students. And one of the issues, as we look at this a little later, is that if you increase the number of potential schools that are host schools, you've increased the cost of the operation. Because what you want in any of this process is a school district, hopefully, to take all of them if you want to do the dollars. Or if you have more than one school, you only have, you have additional buses on the road is really what it amounts to. So having said that, you can see at this point, there's no one here that can confirm that by 18, 19, you've got anybody out there in total that can take that number. Do I think that could change if you decide to look at this two years from now? It could very well change based upon what I believe is happening in the state. So...
We'll move to...
Yep.
Move to page 10. So taking some of the information that Joe gathered from the superintendent's, we averaged the tuition cost amongst the four schools, amongst the four schools that were interested in taking students. We calculated the transportation cost based off of the contract that you have, utilizing additional busing to get to each of those sites. We calculated the additional miles, additional cost for fuel, with an assumption that regular transportation would continue to Wyndham High School, where they would then pick up buses to take them to the four other districts if that was the direction it was going to go. So when you look at the additional transportation and tuition cost for the total student body to be relocated in other districts, we're looking at $8,409,198, give or take. When we look at the cost operations for Wyndham High School, which we've gathered from superintendent's office and documents that were provided to us, when you add up the salaries, benefits, contractual services, commodities, equipments, and others, the cost to operate the high school, Wyndham High School now, is $8,67,480. There's additional cost for deferred maintenance, maintenance and repair, insurance, and other supplies, which then you add to it. We're looking at an average cost of $8,559,987, which gives you about $150,000 delta to the positive savings as a town. But it doesn't take into account late buses, because until you get into the programming and understanding what kids are going to be involved and what programs, we can't really determine what that after-school busing requirement would be. It also can be negotiated with the receiving district, so we don't have that in there. When you look down at the list of assumptions, special education costs will continue at the curtain level. The tuition will continue at term level. Let's see. So we assume equal distribution of projected total enrollment of 593 students at Coventry, Region 19, Lyman Memorial High School, and establish that that's where that tuition average came from. So we're looking at $150,000, give or take, in savings if you were to close the high school and redistrict all your children.
I'm going to add back. One of the complexities, also, I'll just enter into, if, in fact, you go further, that if you have multiple schools, the board of education is going to have to deal with the issue of how is the decision made for my child? And you could discuss, well, we'll have a lottery system, or you'll have a system that will define what programs are available. It really creates administratively, having been a superintendent, a very difficult avenue to drive down. The part that's not here, and you haven't asked for it yet, and it's a very time-consuming one, is the entire program offerings, as I mentioned earlier, that are available in any of the host. So if you did narrow it down to five or six school districts, you would then have that available. And that would also drive for you which school district might, in fact, provide the best services for the students that would be coming there. And then I'll add to that, you would develop a calendar, because you're starting now, and if you were to go in this direction for the year 2019, '20, or whatever it may be, you would start now with that process so that you'd be equipped to talk about it during your budget and have decisions made by inner community. So it is a lengthy process and one that needs to be public. And as I said earlier, recensives are what that does for families. Either way, and by the way, there's some school districts that have been sending their kids off for years. It's just a non-issue. You're up next on your...
Yep. So, okay. We are moving on to Option One. There was three options. We went to the third option because that was the most, everybody was most interested, and everybody's very familiar with Option One and Two. So Option One is renovate the Wyndham High School like new. Friar Associates and myself and our team evaluated the existing conditions of the high school. A master plan was done for the town. There's been a lot of discussion about the option to renovate as new. The summary of the data, we met, we believe we were meeting the objectives of the board of education. We're maximizing the availability of state grant monies by doing a renovation as new and a consolidation of resources and facilities by taking Kramer Board of Ed, maintenance, pre-child care, and utilizing space in the high school as well as a renovate as new.
Mr. Rogers, what page are you on right now?
I'm on page number five. So we jumped back and forth. We're on page five. So as the existing condition report includes high school structures in fair condition, however, several systems and finishes are past their useful life and require replacement. HVAC, electrical and plumbing systems, and finished upgrades, ceilings, and code compliance items. There was a significant number of general discussions between Friar Associates and the Board of Education School and Planning Design Committee regarding renovate like new project as compared to new construction. And it touched on the following points. The town receives more money by renovating. The state is incentivizing districts to renovate buildings as opposed to build new because they give an additional 10% to your, of grant monies, to your reimbursement rate, which would put you at a 79.64 reimbursement rate for the renovation. Town saves more money by renovating. The cost of renovate like new product neighborhood of $300 a square foot, for comparison to build a new high school, a neighborhood of $400 a square foot. Add to this the cost that would not be included, projected renovation project, full demolition of existing building, and increased level environmental abatement and site work costs in building infrastructure. So to summarize that, to build new, you'd have to take down the old, and there's a significant cost to doing that. So renovate as new appears to be the best option as far as for the town in reimbursement and cost. There were some other considerations about building a new high school facility, but they weren't considered, so we're just going to leave it here for you to read. We'll move on to the next option.
By the way, we're not making a specific recommendation that you should do a one or two. Don't misunderstand. The fact that three is not an option, it drives you back either to Option One or Two, and what really Doug is saying, of those two, based upon what he's presenting now, that option, he just discussed, would probably be in your best interest fiscally.
Can I just ask a question?
This was built for 1,100 students.
The new facility...
1,700.
1,700. Thank you.
That's what it was originally. That was...
Maybe that's what it was supposed to be built for, but it was originally built from between 11 and 12.
So what would this square footage be required for a new facility for, let's call it even 600? Or you have to calculate for a higher number of students?
So the state requires that you utilize your enrollment projections as the calculation figure for space. So when we did, when Friar put this together, this piece, I'll go to...
It may be difficult for you to see it on here. There it is.
Is there any way we can move this closer, make that bigger or something? But those of you who have a packet, if you go to page 16, there is a breakout of Option One and Two with the space standards, cost, reimbursement, cost of the town, what the grant will pay, and we can go through that. We also were asked to look at options of accommodating the board of education in the high school building, because you're right, the building is huge. It was built for a much larger population at the time. Years have gone by. Now we don't have, the enrollments have declined across the state. So we have to look at what are the options, and some of the options are to utilize some of that space for board of education, the early childhood center, and also the facilities department.
Excuse me, Mr. Rogers, before you get too deeply into this, again, this is not a Q and A. These gentlemen have very limited time to make their present, overview presentation. We are going to schedule Q and As. We will bring them back, and we have a more detailed workshop kind of environment that would go more smoothly, but we would like to get them going, so let's keep our questions very, very brief, please.
Okay, Doug. Thank you.
I was going to add back one more thing for a second about when you think about closing a school. You also have the whole issue, what's the impact on your K-8 program in terms of bus waves, time the school starts and stops? There's a number of issues. It isn't an isolated event. It can be handled, it can be done, but you can't simply say it off and on and everything remains the same. Are you up next?
All right. So we'll go back to Option One and Two. I think the easiest way to look at it is to look at page 16 and look at this table. And then I'll go through it and try to make it as clear as mud for you, and then we'll move forward. So looking at a renovation like new option, in Option One, we have three columns that include accommodation of board of ed, early childhood, and to accommodate the facilities department. If you look down the columns of each of them, we have the square foot allocation, the escalation rate by square foot, the budget, what the state's reimbursement would be, and what the actual cost to Wyndham would be. We've estimated ineligible costs because regardless of what you do, some contract, some construction have some ineligible. There might be some off-site work. We just can't guarantee, we don't know exactly what that will be, but we know that there's always a small amount of ineligible, so we're estimating 4%. The space standards, as you were just asking the question, existing square footage adjusted is 200,000. Proposed square footage, 22, net 22,518. And the state allowable square footage is 50,000 square feet for these pieces. So to go through and try to explain each and every one of these columns to you, I think you can see where the headings are and the columns are. At the bottom, we have a construction schedule, date, timeframe, with Option One cost that includes all three of the items and elements to join at the high school of $112,542,417 with the total cost to Wyndham. The Wyndham share is $39,394,855, or $153. So as you can see, you have a really good reimbursement rate from the state. Renovate as new is pretty effective here. So when we go to Option Two, which is demolition and reducing the footprint of the square, of the school, because it is way oversized, even including other items, your Option Two costs are still in the range of $97,643,000, and I believe that says 180. You know, and that's a significant amount of demo that would be required, which has a significant cost. So when you compare a renovate as new to the right size and include and compare demo, your cost, it actually, your cost to Wyndham is higher because of the reimbursement rate for a renovate as new as opposed to an alterations project, and that's why your town share would be at $42,157,14. So we'll move on. You zoomed it in. Thank you. All right. We'll get back to that. So in your packets, you will see some drawings that come from the master plan and were put together for this that show the existing floor plans if we were to add the board of education, early childhood into it. And that's on page 11. Okay? On page 12, we're showing some proposed demolitions because we still would have to reduce the footprint of the school. On page 13 is the first floor proposed demo, which you can see it's just these shaded areas on the, I'm not sure if that says true north, so the eastern side of the school. As we move forward into the, on page 14, showing the second floor demo.
That's considering removing the entire second floor?
Right. To meet the square footage allocation that the state outlines based on your enrollment, that's how much of the building would have to disappear.
Be demolished.
That's right.
And that's where all of our science labs are.
Right. So you would still have to do a renovation, and you would reprogram your space and, you know, so, yes.
I'm just making it clear because everybody at home can't see what we can see, so...
Yes. On the page 15, you will see the additional areas in the school which have been identified for the pre-K and the board of ed, which the architect believes would not impact the ability to run the high school and separates the pre-K enough from them, and there could be some additional barriers and everything so that there is not any concern about the students intermingling. So you need to go back to...
It's going to be page 17 here.
What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one. Go ahead.
We're going back to page seven. We're going to page seven, which is the recommendations page. And this is you.
That's me? Oh, okay. Let me just add while I'm looking for page seven, is that I mentioned earlier, enrollment projections are important, and they're for two reasons. One, if you're going to go for construction, you've got to have a recent enough, I think it's a look back maybe five years. So part of the contract that we had with you is that we would contract out and have enrollment projections through 2026. That's been done, been delivered. It's necessary not only for the construction, but it's also necessary for planning relative to any growth that you may be having here, as I said earlier, and whether school districts, they may be able to take 100, but next year they can't take 250. We also held a focus... We also held a focus group with the, let's see, list, I met, I think, with five different individuals who, I think it's on page...
Page 17.
17. If you go to page 17, why do we do that? It's because not only do you have just enrollment projections based upon birth, it's called the cohort survival rate, and that's how they project the numbers, but the questions that I wanted to ask, as you can see there, have to do with, do you anticipate any changes in town in terms of new construction? Is there any transition going to take place in terms of your converting, maybe buildings that now are going to have, you know, 42 apartments in them? What are the major changes that will be going on? And of course, the issue of employment. If there's a major employer in the drivable distance that, I ran into this in one community, they were going to shut down, and that meant children were going to be leaving the school district. But as you can see from my, my comments here, there's nothing significant that they can point towards that would impact student enrollment. They did comment that, I guess, the number of houses around eastern Connecticut have been converted to rooming houses for high school students, for college students, and as a result, those aren't there for someone who's looking for an apartment. So that's being said, you can also check the latest enrollment report that we delivered, and it will support in great detail their work relative to what they project is going to happen in this community over the next five years. It's extremely detailed based upon all the evidence that they have, and you can use that as you go forward, either way, whether you go with any of these options, but it's really good research for you. Okay, where are we? Page seven?
No, we're, okay, we're going back, yes, we're back on page seven.
You want to do this one?
No.
Go ahead.
All right. Right, on page seven, we have the recommendations. We recommend that the Wyndham Board of Education consider the data and findings from this feasibility study along with other factors in determining the best option for the community. One of the two renovation options, option one, is preferred not only because of estimated project costs, but also because it would make the best use of the existing infrastructure while minimizing the extent possible necessary reservations, renovations. Maximizes the available state grant monies and best meets the objective of the Board of Education, including the consolidation of resources and facilities by relocating all facilities from the Kramer Building. Is an estimate that this would save an additional $150,000 in the year in maintenance and custodial costs for the operations of that building. Option two is less feasible because it would require extensive alterations to the structure and MEP systems, that's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems of the building, the total cost of which would cost more than to build new. Option three is not currently a viable option because there's not enough high schools within the 20-mile radius that can enroll all 559 students in the 218-19 school year. School situations do change, and if the board is interested in pursuing this option further, they can interview the superintendents again next year.
If you haven't guessed, I dropped this entire package as I was walking through the door here this evening. I'm trying to put it back together. I'm going to move to page 18, which should be, yeah, page 18. We're providing a research brief on school closure, and I'm prepared to say you're probably the only community in the nation that has this data, and we have a research department, and I asked them a series of questions about, number one, what do we, what do we know out there relative to the impact on the community economically? How about the social impact? What about employment impact on the community? What kind of youngsters benefit most if you make the transition? And you're going to look at this, and I'm not going to read it all to you, but if you look at it, there's about 30 pages of really terrific research that if you were asked in the future, what's, what's out there that you can cite relative to the decision you go to make? I'm just going to highlight a couple of them if you would. If you would simply go to page, it's probably the first page, yeah. It's called, no, it's page 19 of the document, but it's really the first page you're going to run up against. You see it there? There's 10 things listed, do you see that? The most common reason, is everybody with me? Okay. Most common reason, school districts close high schools is a result of poor academic performance. Interesting. Where do you find most of these high schools that are closing, interesting enough, they tend to be rural areas. I grew up in Ohio. We had county school districts. Very easy, you want to change the school district? It's a county decision. Where there are states that have initiatives for communities to close a school and send it to another school, financial, whatever it may, there are more school districts in those type of states that will take advantage of that. So that's the first one. Look at the second one. The second most common reason for closing the high school is financial hardship. In order for the school closure to be effective, the strategy for reducing spending, I would say every one of these I've ever done is not driven by anything other than, we think we can save money and lower my tax rate. And every time I deal one with a school closing at the elementary level, it's usually about that. Look at number four. Students who traditionally struggle at school and students from disadvantaged social and economic backgrounds are the major benefactor of the smaller schools. A lot of this research is about size of schools. So if you're, if you have students going to a high school here with 500, and they're now going to go to a school that has 1,200, the research in here could assist you in terms of answering questions relative to that. If you, again, number five just supports what I said about rural, rural communities, farming communities. By the way, in this world that we live in, I grew up in a very small town, if you closed the high school, most of the teachers all were employed locally. There was a major impact on places that employed most of their teachers locally. And number seven, despite a substantial amount of literature on economic and scales of education, there's little consistent evidence on whether school districts consolidation saves money while maintaining same educational quality. And I will share with you that almost all the studies I've done, there is not this big pot of gold at the end that says, look what we've saved. Now, is every community different? Absolutely. I'm not saying that you won't save more than $150,000. I'm just saying to you that the evidence in here will not support, in most cases, well, if we close, we have to obviously save. And the other part of that is, you've got to then, as we did here, know what your high school cost is. And by the way, there's something called the EDO-01 that's done annually, and that would define your high school cost. You may not use that for a study like that. The three most expensive high schools on a per-student basis in this state are North Stonington, East Granby, and Bloomfield, because very small schools, 250 kids, but you still got a principal and you got all those people. What you would have to use is what we chose in this document, what's the actual operating cost if the school was not operating next year? What wouldn't we have to pay? That's the only balance you'd use. Of course, you've got to fast forward it to a year out there of 2019 or 2020. If someone is telling you, you must use the EDO numbers, they're not, don't use them because it's just not appropriate. It's not the real cost of your high school. It's just, I don't know what your EDO was, what numbers are, I didn't even look at them. So in this document, I think you, it's good night's reading, puts you asleep real quick, but it's a substantial amount of material that'll address almost any issue that you or a member of the public would raise about consolidation. And you can own that for sheer factified notice.
Joe, I think, I think Mrs. Lambert has a quick question.
Just a quick question. When you were putting together all the numbers financially, did you look at grant loss that the district would suffer in closing a high school? Because there are some grants, Commissioners Network grants and other grants that are specific just to the high school, that funding, obviously, if we didn't have a high school anymore, wouldn't apply. And how did that? I haven't had a chance to read it all, obviously. It got put in front of me, and listening to what you guys have to say is more important to me than reading as, you know, away from what you're speaking of.
I did not do that. I, let's go ahead.
Greg, when we put this together, we did take into effect some of the information that we had that included some additional contracted costs.
Okay.
So we don't have all of that information because a lot of that isn't just available, you know, so, but that's also why this $150,000 is probably...
A soft number.
A soft number. So, but we also know that if there was state money spent on the high school for roof, MEP, that kind of stuff, those...
That'll all have to be paid back.
That money would also have to be paid back, but that wasn't factored into this. It was factored into the rent, the option two and three on that sheet.
Okay.
Something that I did not factor in, but I've done in other school districts for these simulations is, particularly in the Great Hartford area, you heard of the chef decision. I was involved in, helped build 18 magnet schools. So if students are leaving a specific, if the children are going out from school district A to a magnet school, the cost of that is borne by the sending district. Therefore, if you had many students that were involved in magnet schools and you're automatically paying those tuitions, that's going to be borne by the receiving host school, and they won't, that's going to be added to the cost because they have to pay that. And the flip side of that is that, in the Great Hartford area, and I don't know if you have anything like that here, for years, we've had Project Choice, where students in Hartford attend public schools, and the receiving district gets, I think, $2,500 or $3,000 a student, so you can come up to $150,000 real quick. Well, if that student leaves that school district and goes into another one, those students are going to go, and that revenue flows into the receiving school district. So there's a lot of nuances to this process. They could all be accounted for, but it's not at this stage something that I did any detailed examination, because you're not at the point of saying, we need now really to take a harder look at option three.
Right. Thank you.
And we cut to, believe it or not, we did that in 45 minutes.
Thank you.
As I said at the beginning, we're not going to do discussion or questions tonight, but I'm sure, and I've got some notes that I took on your presentation, I'm sure other people also do, as you go, as people reading go through this thing, I recommend that Mr. Kalagian's got an email address that's on the website. He's chairing the Planning and Design Committee. I recommend that you email him questions, specific questions about the data that you have, right? You know, did you include this number? Did, you know, in some cases, there may be questions back to you. In some cases, they may be additional information that we need to collect, like, you know, what would the, you showed how much it would cost to Wyndham taxpayers, but what does that work out to in terms of interest per year on bonding that we'd have to pay through our tax dollars? That's a...
$1 million.
...we'd work out. But it's clearly a number of interest. So those kinds of questions should go to Mr. Kalagian's email address.
And I think there's a, I think there's a strong, a strong motivation in the community as well to have a softer conversation about stakeholders, where the rubber meets the road, families, the teachers, our staffs, everybody who is involved in Wyndham High School. So we would like to invite you back for some, some of those kinds of conversations when we can organize them in the near future, if that's possible.
Let me, before I leave, I want to just do something. Having been involved as a superintendent and boards of education for many, many years, I really thank you for any board that will be taking this on as a project to improve the quality of services for the families and the children in the town. And it's not a knee jerk. I usually get called in when, we got, we're going to make a decision in the next 12 months, but to be proactive and start that process, I have great admiration for any board that works hard at this because our kids are important.
Thank you. Yeah. Couple minutes.
As you look at the calculation of the numbers, the cost of special ed increases on a yearly basis. Do you take in consideration the cost of special ed if we send students out?
We put an assumption in on special ed because of the fact that it does change and that the, they, you know, they, right now, we only have a current number, we don't know what it's going to go to, and then also, I believe that the districts, when they...
Let me address special education for a moment.
Yeah, he's bitter, he is.
This board and your community, if you had children attending a host school, has no role in the operations of the school district. You can be involved in PTO, but you're not going to be on the board. The PPTs that are held for children will occur in that town, and as parents, obviously, you're invited into it. So the issue always has been, the sending school district says, I know what it costs to send those five youngsters in a van over here, but now that they're over there, I don't know exactly how much more time and how much more money is going to be spent. And secondly, I don't know whether we're going to be able to send all of these youngsters knowing the price of the services may increase because there's no control. So you do lose all of that. Doesn't mean your child won't be taken care of, doesn't mean you're not being represented, but you're correct. It's just very difficult to project it. It really is.
We have time, may I? Well, other things that haven't been calculated into this, just by my glance at it, and I didn't dig too deep. When we had students going to NFA, there was a 4% per year increase in tuition. So quickly, that'll eat up some of this $150,000. If a sending school, if a school that we send our students to decides for behavioral, educational, whatever reasons they don't like our students, they can kick them back. They're not obligated to keep them.
They are.
They are obligated to keep them.
I didn't get all the details. There's a contract that would be developed between the two school districts. I've seen many of these contracts. It's very clear that you don't have an opt. In fact, quite frankly, one of the costs that they have, if in fact the youngster was, if there's a cost associated with a specific youngster that was never anticipated and didn't, didn't occur in the first school, the existing school, they own it. They don't pass that cost back to somebody. That's, those are their students, period.
And if the students get expelled, what happens then? It's not a huge population, I'm not saying that, but...
They own it.
They own all of it.
It's just, I could, I'll tell you, 10 towns that take all those kids, and they're just their kids. And that's the way they want it. In fact, one superintendent said to me, I won't take any kids unless you guarantee me there was going to be late buses because they're not going to come to our school and just go home at 3:30.
Right.
And one said, I'll even pay for those late buses. And that's how important they've got to be part of it. Remember, there's a whole additional cost in terms of athletics and programs.
Sports teams, yeah. We lose that identity in our town as well. We lose all of our sports teams. They go to other schools, and that's where they play.
I once worked with the school district to close their high school, and I, we did a enormous amount of work, and it's all about this, and I said, when it's all done, it's emerging two high schools. It's not about this. You're going to have the longest argument about two things. What color are the shirts going to be on the athletic teams? And are they going to be the Cardinals or the Blue Jays? Because somebody's got to give it up, and that's exactly what occurs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we hit that pretty closely. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for that.
Would you like to, before we turn, remind everybody that there's a band concert at 6:30?
Yes, indeed.
This is the 50th anniversary of Sergeant Russell.
Some, some of us were there.
No problem.
I was, I was there, a lot.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
If it is. Are you there?
I was in favor, yeah.